Um, one to three.
Any changes? Mr. Floyd?
Sonin issues may not be meeting on the sixteenth.
So it may meet, or it may not meet?
May not.
But you don't know.
We don't know, we'll determine that tomorrow.
Okay, so we will schedule, we'll keep it in the schedule as if we were going to meet, then if you decide not to, no uncertain feelings will be hurt that we don't, okay? Any other changes? Then consent agenda, Mrs. Raybine.
Okay, tonight's consent agenda has six items. The first is to approve claims totaling six hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Number two, adopt a resolution revising resolutions four, five, seven, eight, four, five, two, six, four, one, two, eight, five, four, two, two, and six, five, seven, zero, mending the sewer administrative fees charged in the city's policy for review, and approval of requests for sewer service to property outside the corporate limits. Number three is to set a public hearing on March twenty-second, two thousand four, on a request from Community Bank to rezone property located at nineteen fifty-one Ernest from R-two, which is two-family residential, to B-C, which is a restricted commercial district with the intent of establishing a branch bank with drive-through facilities adjacent to thirty-two-hundred Brook Street. Number four is to set a public hearing on March twenty-second, two thousand four, on a request from the Missoula Redevelopment Agency to rezone property bounded by Orange Street on the east, Broadway on the north, and the Clark Fork River on the south, from C Commercial to the Riverfront Triangle Special District, which is a mixed-use, located in the northeast quarter of Section Twenty-One Township Thirteen North, Range Nineteen West, Principal Meridian, Montana. Number five is to confirm Charles Talbot, A.J. Razakowski, Ben Webb, and Tim Pagelkopf as firefighters for the Fire Department. And finally, number six is to award the bid for one two thousand four Crown Victoria Patrol Car for the Police Department to Bison Ford in Great Falls, Montana, in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars.
Is there any public comment on items one through six of the consent agenda? Chief Steenberg.
It's with great pleasure that I'd like to introduce these four young gentlemen sitting here before you. They have successfully completed their first year with our department, including a six-month probationary period and a six-month trainee period. They eagerly await your confirmation. And I think they're pretty happy to be celebrating their first year in a few days, as Missoula's celebrating its anniversary today also. So with that, I'll give you Ben Webb here, if you stand up. Tim Pagelkopf, Charles Talbot, and A.J. Razakowski.
Gentlemen. We look forward to many more years of hard work from all four of you. Any questions from council? Mr. Floyd?
There were a couple of items on claims, only one of which I'm really interested in taking up. It was from Tri-State Equipment for a generator block heater. And I asked Mr. Ramharder whether that would create a problem removing it. He indicated it would not, so I'd like to have that removed so we could talk about that and get an answer, and then bring it back for settlement next week.
Okay. Any others? Then we'll have a roll call vote on items two through six.
Just the, just the one item, the balance of claims.
Comes as...
A package.
Comes as a package, so...
Well, then, let's, let's just let it go.
Well, is there a question we could answer at this point, or...
I don't think at this point, no.
Okay, so Mr. Floyd withdraws his motion. We'll vote on items one through six of the consent agenda. Any discussion? We'll have a roll call vote, all those in favor? We'll just have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Lovegrove.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Reedy.
Yes.
Rye.
Yes.
Ballas.
Yes.
Charney.
Yes.
Childers.
Yes.
Crowley.
Yes.
Engan.
Yes.
Floyd.
Yes.
Kazmirzak.
Yes.
And Kendall.
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? Twelve i's, zero n's, zero extensions, and zero absents.
Consent agenda is approved. Are there any comments from city staff agencies, commissions, or authorities? Seeing none, we have no special presentations. We do have three public hearings, and I'll take them in the order that they're listed. We'll begin with a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the submission of an application and agreement to certifications for application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Section One-O-eight Loan Guarantee Program. If we could begin with the staff report.
Good evening, my name's Jennifer Blumberg, and I'm a grants administrator and brownfields coordinator with the Office of Planning and Grants. I'm here tonight to request that you sign a resolution authorizing the City of Missoula on behalf of the District Eleven Human Resource Council to apply for one point eight million dollars in HUD Section One-O-eight Loan Guarantee Funds. Section One-O-eight Funds must be used for activities that benefit low and moderate-income citizens of Missoula. The city will subcontract with Missoula Area Economic Development Corporation, or MADC, to manage the funds. Jim Morton, Executive Director of the HRC, is here to explain what his organization intends to do with the money. And also here to answer any questions you may have are Dick King, Director of MADC, and Mike Barton, who administers the CDBG program. And I'm also available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blumberg. Mr. Morton?
Good evening, my name is Jim Morton, I'm here representing the Human Resource Council. The Human Resource Council has previously been granted home funds and CDBG funds from the city for this project. Our intent is to construct fifty-four units on the property, which we will sell to low and moderate-income families. We are asking for the one point eight as a loan to purchase the lots. These lots will be purchased after subdivision review and after the appropriate sign-offs from Department Environmental Quality, indicating no further action is required on that site. We hope that this will be the first of two phases in which we will work with the neighborhood residents to increase the homeownership in that area. At our first hearing on subdivision review, we had a lot of very positive comments from the neighborhood and have received a lot of support from the area. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Is there any other public comment?
Tony Tweedell, citizen of Missoula. I guess my usual warning, talking to you about brownfields as I have in the past. Brownfields is, superficially, sounds like a great idea. I want you to know that, in my opinion at least, brownfields originated not so much as a way to get property back onto the tax rolls and to increase economic activity, which are beneficial aspects of brownfields, but to reduce the level of cleanup that's required at Superfund and other remediation sites. So now that the city is applying for brownfields money, not just from EPA, but from HUD, basically, as I understand it, I just urge you to, as you spend this money, to spend it bearing in mind how the remediation at these contaminated sites, such as the Champion Site and the Missoula White Pine Sash Site, might be cut back in the name of economic development. For example, this, this grant, I understand, is particularly targeted towards low-income folks and other deserving elements of the community. So at the same time, you might bear in mind that environmental contamination problems often affect low-income folks and people who, in their lives, have a lot less flexibility in where they can live and how they live, and are often forced to live in proximity to areas of contamination. And there's a huge record in the published literature on, on that. So both the Montana DEQ and the City-County Health Department, the Water Quality District, have commented on the latest residential development proposal out at White Pine Sash, raising some of the concerns they both have over the remediation that's done at that site. So in your roles as city council members and as staff of the City of Missoula, from the mayor on down, I'd urge you to just keep a sharp eye out for any reductions in the amount of remediation that's, that has been planned and that may be cut back because there's an opportunity here to get a property back into the tax rolls or to provide some low-income housing or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tweedell. Any other public comment?
For the record, I'm Will Snodgrass, P.O. Box nine-two-two-five. As many of you know, Tony Tweedell and I were tracking the White Pine situation from very early on. And the concerns that I have, I think, are shared by Tony. And that is that the depth of the contamination there and the breadth of the contamination on the north side is very extensive. It is probably, it would probably be possible to remediate it in part, given many, many millions of dollars of resources. But in, from a practical level, that site can never be properly remediated. I think the primary concern, from my perspective, is the air quality issue. Because those soils get into the air, they're absolutely saturated with toxins, penta, and one would expect dioxin, usually it was found at eighteen parts per million in that form of penta. So although the brownfields grants provide a means of essentially covering over those surfaces and building things on them, and they serve some purpose, they really don't serve the greater purpose of cleanup. The brownfield grants make it easy for all of us to make these sites kind of disappear and go away. And we all recall Love Canal, other places around the country, I'm sure, many in Louisiana, Texas, New Jersey, all over, where this stuff stays in the ground to cause problems for people who buy homes there or who move into areas that are built over with brownfields. I really can't tell you what to do with this money and how to use it because the amount of money that's released is really never enough to do the cleanup job. But given the fact that this site was known about for a very long time, nineteen eighty-seven documents submitted by DEQ to Dwayne Duff, the manager, documents from nineteen ninety submitted by Mr. Trombetta of the DEQ to the Health Department here, warning them that the levels that they had written down, which were the number eighty-five parts per million, were actually eight thousand five hundred parts per billion, and they were very, very high. It wasn't until much later, when a whistleblower uncovered the scam by dropping some paperwork into the Missoulian, that this was actually brought to the attention of the public. So given that history of covering things up, I think the bigger question is, what happens if we really cover it up with housing? What's that going to mean for people who live there? There's no way to stop that stuff from leaching into the aquifer. And I think the final picture I'd like to leave you with is the picture of the oil spot we've all seen on a concrete driveway. Drop of oil or two or three leaks on there and makes that little multicolored spot, and you take your garden hose, you try to wash it off. And it looks like it's gone, but you come back, fifteen seconds, it's reappeared. You can wash it for hours, and it stays there. And that's the nature of the contamination that's underground there at the White Pine Site, and it is leaching into the aquifer. So the job you guys have, it's not an easy one. I'm not in favor of brownfield grants the way they've been applied so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
My name is Tim German, I'm with the Sparrow Group. And we're actually the company that is proposing to clean it up and so divide this property. And the brownfield grant has, working with HRDC, has allowed us, the proposal that we submitted to the DEQ is to remove all, all fill material that's not natural to the site. So this will be cleaned up completely. We're hauling all unnatural material away and disposing of it and bringing in clean material to refill the site. So this does allow the site to be cleaned up. And if this site is not cleaned up now, it could be, you know, ten or fifteen years before another opportunity comes along. So it's a great opportunity to clean the site up in a proper way with DEQ overseeing every step of it.
Thank you, Mr. German. Further public comment? Any additional public comment? I'll close the public hearing. Questions from council? Any questions? Okay. Mr. Childers?
I'd like to move the resolution.
Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the resolution, Nicholson.
Yes.
Reedy.
Yes.
Rye.
Yes.
Ballas.
Yes.
Charney.
Yes.
Childers.
Yes.
Crowley.
Yes.
Engan.
Yes.
Floyd.
Yes.
Kazmirzak.
Yes.
Kendall.
Yes.
Lovegrove.
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? Twelve i's, zero n's, zero extensions, and zero absents.
The resolution passes unanimously. I'll open a public hearing on a resolution to close and vacate portions of the Platted Alley Right-of-Way in Blocks Two and Three of McCormick Edition Number Two and the Hillsdale Street Right-of-Way south of Cedar Street in McCormick Edition Number Two to the City of Missoula. This is Section Twenty-One Township Thirteen North, Range Nineteen West. This is an item that was held over from February twenty-third. And we have a brief update on the staff report and take any more public comment?
Uh, yes. This was held open to allow additional time for advertising the...
Carla, could you identify yourself for the record?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Carla Kraus, City Public Works Department. The advertising has been completed, which fulfills the requirements of state law for a right-of-way vacation. No public comment was received in writing at the city clerk's offices at five o'clock this afternoon. So if the council is ready to proceed, all of the legal requirements have been met for this. And a resolution has been prepared for your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kraus. Is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from council? Seeing none. Let's see, Mr. Floyd, do you have this one? It's in Public Works. Oh, Mr. Charney, excuse me. I'm sorry.
I'll move the resolution to close and vacate portions of the alley right-of-way.
Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the resolution... Reedy.
Yes.
Rye.
Yes.
Ballas.
Yes.
Charney.
Yes.
Childers.
Yes.
Crowley.
Yes.
Engan.
Yes.
Floyd.
Yes.
Kazmirzak.
Yes.
Kendall.
Yes.
And Lovegrove.
Yes.
And Nicholson.
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote? Twelve i's, zero n's, zero extensions, and zero absents.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on a resolution creating SID five-twenty-eight, a resolution setting forth certain factors with respect to sanitary sewer in the Rattlesnake, overruling certain protests and creating the district consisting of sub-districts numbers one, three, and four, for the purpose of undertaking sanitary sewer improvements in the Rattlesnake area in accordance with Resolution of Intention six thousand, six hundred and thirteen, and District Court Number Four, Cause Number DV zero-three-two-one-four. We'll begin with the staff report. Mr. Bender.
Bruce Bender, Director of Public Works. Tonight, we want to give a very brief and concise display of the information that both the City-County Health Department and the City Public Works Department had presented at first the Public Works Committee Meeting of February eighteenth, two thousand four, and a synopsis of what we presented at the February twenty-fourth, two thousand four. These presentations lasted about an hour and a half. For those in public here at the, at this meeting, copies of those are available next to the door. For the audience listening, these are available on the website of the city through the Public Works Committee. And so therefore, you could obtain those. Also additionally, we have a hard copy of the SID five-twenty-eight Rattlesnake Sewer Records Overview, which is basically a synopsis of all the action that occurred last year. And again, that's available up front here, too, that, that the public could have available. So tonight, we'll begin with Mr. Jim Carlson from the Health Department, and again, a brief overview of a rather lengthy presentation. Thank you.
For the record, my name's Jim Carlson. I'm Director of Environmental Health at the City-County Health Department. One of the major reasons we're here tonight is due to the fact that the Clark Fork River, from its headwaters down to its confluence with the Flathead River, is listed pursuant to Section three oh three D of the Clean Water Act. And it was listed in nineteen eighty-eight by the Environmental Protection Agency as an impaired stream. State and federal law requires that TMDLs, Total Maximum Daily Load, standards be developed for a body of water, such as the Clark Fork, when it is listed. You can see in this slide, heavy plant growth resulting from nutrients in the river. Actually, those, those whiter spots are surfaced areas of algae. The flow of the river is also modified. And in areas where the plant growth is real heavy, you get stagnation of water and sedimentation of sediments, and the benthic communities in the bottoms of the streams are altered as a result. This is a picture that was taken last summer from the Orange Street Bridge in Missoula, showing the algae in town. These, this problem extends, as I said, all the way to the confluence with the Flathead River. Below Missoula, excuse me, below the confluence with the Bitterroot, the species of algae changes to a diatomaceous species. Nonetheless, excessive plant growth is a problem throughout the stretch. The impacts are that it degrades aquatic habitats and alters invertebrate communities and can alter the larger species communities. As streams experience excessive plant growth, they tend to favor species of hypertrophic levels in a stream such as the Clark Fork. We would expect to see salmoned fish, trout. As trophic changes occur, habitats are created that can tend to favor fish such as pike, bass, crappies, those sorts of things. Excessive plant growth depletes oxygen supplies. Or in, in the, during the evening, when there's no sun and the plants are not photosynthesizing, oxygen levels drop off to their lowest levels just before sunrise. And as I indicated, the plant growth itself can modify flows and increase sedimentation in the areas of the heavy beds. In nineteen ninety-three, the Tri-State Council established a VNRP Subcommittee with a goal of setting TMDLs for the Clark Fork River. That group worked over a period of five years. And by nineteen ninety-eight, had proposed standards for nitrous, nitrogen, phosphorus, and algae, had identified reductions that could be accomplished by the cities of Butte, Deer Lodge, Missoula City and County, and Smurfett Stone Corporation. And in nineteen ninety-eight, the document known as the VNRP was signed by those various parties, giving them ten years to achieve reductions resulting from promised actions. At your last Subcommittee meeting, there was testimony questioning the validity of the VNRP as a TMDL. I'd like to read from the approval letter from EPA. This is to Tim Fox, the Division Administrator of Planning, Prevention, and Assistance at the State Department of Environmental Quality. Dear Mr. Fox, thank you for your recent submittal dated September twenty-first, nineteen ninety-eight, requesting approval of the phosphorus and nitrogen total maximum daily loads for the Clark Fork River. We have completed our review of this project and wish to approval, approve it as TMDLs. In particular, we approve the TMDLs as indicated on the attached table in accordance with Section three oh three D of the Clean Water Act. The TMDL is documented in the report entitled, quote, "Clark Fork River Voluntary Nutrient Reduction Program." And that's signed by Max Dotson, Assistant Regional Administrator, Region Eight EPA. In the TMDL, there's a number of city and county commitments. Excuse me, in the VNRP approved as a TMDL, there are a number of city and county commitments. Those are to address septic effluent impacts on surface water pollution by offering incentives for people to connect to sewer for existing facilities and new subdivisions by connecting fifty percent of the existing six thousand, seven hundred and eighty septic systems and to continue connecting existing septic systems to sewer in the Missoula area at the rate equivalent to the issuance of new septic permits in the county. In summary, the Clark Fork River is severely impacted by nutrients and plant growth. State and federal law requires that the problem be corrected. The plan for correction is the VNRP, and it is approved by DEQ and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Other cities, towns, and companies are fulfilling VNRP requirements. The City, County, and City-County Health Department are obligated in the VNRP to connect thirty-three hundred and ninety septics to city sewer by two thousand and eight. And to date, five projects, three in the city and two in the county, have been created to accomplish VNRP obligations. The city is building a nineteen-million-dollar expansion and treatment upgrade to fulfill VNRP promises. And with expansion, the plant will remove eighty-seven point four percent of phosphorus and seventy-eight point eight percent of nitrogen. Rattlesnake SIDs are necessary to help fulfill VNRP connection requirements. There is nothing special about the affected areas or their effluent that suggests that these SIDs for sewer should not be created. And they are necessary to help us create and solve the problem of excess plant growth in the Clark Fork Basin. This is a basin-wide problem. Its solution is going to affect a lot of people in the basin, and this is one of the areas that is most appropriate for connection to sewer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Good evening, Mayor Cadiz, members of the council. My name is Peter Nielsen, Supervisor of Water Quality in the Missoula City-County Health Department, testifying on behalf of the Water Quality District, presenting on behalf... presenting on behalf of the Water Quality District tonight. There we go. In recent years, I've offered similar support before you and other agencies before the Linda Vista Project, East Reserve Phase 1 and 2, East Missoula, Mullen Road Project, the Hickory Street SID, and most recently, in the Rattlesnake, the Pine View and Canabadd SID several years ago. The Water Quality District's mission is to protect and improve the quality of surface water and groundwater quality in the Missoula Valley. We support these projects, SID 528 and all the projects I just mentioned, because all of them are critical together to protect groundwater and surface water in the Missoula sole source aquifer and surface water, including the Bitterroot and Clark Fork Rivers. Bill Wisner said about 10 years ago, 13 years ago, actually. Bill Wisner is Professor of Hydrogeology at the University of Montana, that we use the top of the aquifer here in Missoula as an open sewer and assume that the bottom will be clean enough to drink, and that we are wrong when we make that assumption. This is a diagram showing a septic system and how it discharges effluent. You've heard testimony about leaking sewer lines. All of the effluent from septic systems, 100% of it is intended to be discharged into the groundwater, where it mixes with the groundwater in the flow direction in what's known as a plume. It can be taken up in a well that's down gradient of the septic system, even though the well is more than 100 feet downstream. Why are we concerned about what's in septic system waste? Septic systems contain a number of contaminants that we're concerned about, including nitrates, bacteria, and viruses that can cause disease and illness, waterborne illness, and chemicals, chemicals including household hazardous waste, commercial waste, paints, pesticides, et cetera, and even pharmaceuticals. In 1996, we studied eight different unsued areas in the Missoula Valley and ranked them for priority for connection. The Rattlesnake ranked fifth out of eight for priority for public sewer. Several of those, most of those other top five have been sewered in the meantime. Several wells in the Rattlesnake were affected by nitrates and bacteria. We had two very high-density quarter sections on seepage pits and cesspools. We had a high percentage of seepage pits and replacement permits in the Rattlesnake. And we found a very important finding, I think, that the groundwater from the Rattlesnake recharges the Missoula aquifer and contributes to elevated nitrates in both the north side and the west Broadway areas. In the Rattlesnake, our permit records at the Health Department indicate 876 septic system permits, and about 60% of the permits are for seepage pits. These are systems which have not been legal to install, legal to permit, in the state of Montana for more than 30 years. The diagram on the left shows a picture of a cesspool, and then on the right there, a seepage pit. They're open-end chambers that discharge waste far below the ground's surface. Their purpose is almost 100% to discharge waste. It's a waste disposal device, not a waste treatment device. Not current technology by any long shot. You can see the distribution of seepage pits in this slide showing. The slide is highlighted with the sub-districts that you're intending to create. And you can see it's particularly on that west side district, the one in green, a high percentage of seepage pit permits. And then in Lincoln Wood, excuse me, Lincoln Wood, we have almost exclusively seepage pits as well. 876 septic system permits in our records, and 35% of those are for replacement system. 65% of them are the original system that was put in the ground. So we have a high percentage of replacement systems. A lot of systems failing up there. Most have had systems fail more than once in their yards in many locations, especially on the west side in those tighter soils. And these systems together, 825 residential units, it's a different number, a different basis. But the 825 residential units generate 165,000 gallons per day of sewage, 69 pounds a day of nitrogen. Goes into the groundwater, flows into the Missoula aquifer. Some of it flows into Rattlesnake Creek as well. Over the years, sewer has been extended up the Rattlesnake. As I mentioned, several years ago, four or five years ago, we curated the Pine View/Canabadd Project, the SID that brought sewer to more than 100 residential units right smack dab in the middle of the Rattlesnake. Sewer mains have gone up both sides of the creek, up both sides of the valley, beyond these areas that you're proposing to sewer. Most of these areas are going to be subject to sewer extension when systems fail. Eventually, sewer will gradually move into these areas. What you're doing here is allowing this to be done more quickly and more cost-effectively for the homeowners. We did look also at advanced treatment septic systems, which have been discussed quite a bit in your committee meetings. I won't go into great detail here, but I will say that they are all experimental. They're all in the process, various stages of the processes of testing, development, and preapproval. They're advanced biological systems that have some promise. However, none of them are currently permitted. They take up at least a half acre of land in order to have enough area to install one of these and then have a full replacement area to put one in after your system fails. So due to space limitations, the high installation costs for these systems, and maintenance difficulties, individual advanced septic systems do not appear to be a good option at all for the Rattlesnake. And on very small lots in these special improvement districts, they're not an option at all because they simply won't fit.
Because we've gotten a serious amount of questions from the public about the status of our treatment plant, wanted to update you on that. Basically, the current treatment levels are basically measured by solid and oxygen demand. And this one here gives a 10-year record, starting back at '92 and all the way up to the current time. The permit levels that were required to be below are in this upper colors here, the purple and the yellow. And then what you see down below in the zigzag are actually the limits, the levels that we've been treating to. So we've been below the permit level for the last 10 years on these two levels. We've had some problems with ammonia levels, which is not really a treatment limit, but based upon a toxicity test. We recently, last year, we did have a couple instances where we had some problems and we had toxicity test violation. As you can see, since last year, our levels have declined. And it was basically a process adjustment. And with the new treatment plant expansion, this problem's been solved. So we're currently involved in the upgrade. It will be completed in September. And we've gone through various construction activity there for the last couple of years, building the round tanks called clarifiers and also the rectangular tanks called reactors. This will enable us to basically provide this level of treatment that we'll be able to reduce the nitrogen to levels of 77.8% total removal. In other words, during the summer months, anyway, this is an example of 10 million gallons per day through June through September. We'll be able to remove this much of the nitrogen with this new system. And also, in addition, we will have an increased capacity. And whereas our current flows right now are 8.3, this is an annual daily average. We're already, with what we've accomplished in the expansion, we got 10 million gallons per day. And then by September, we'll have a biological nutrient reduction plant with a 12 million gallons per day capacity. So basically, this additional capacity means we can be almost 50% above our current flow. In other words, take an additional 50% more wastewater into our treatment plant, and then still provide the additional level of treatment removing all the nutrients.
Good evening, I'm Steve King, City Engineer. The project area is highlighted in red. The existing connected sewer parcels in the Rattlesnake are in green, city limits in yellow. I wanted to frame the project as the remaining developed acreage in the Rattlesnake that is unsued. And we'll get into some specifics about the areas in the project. The majority of the Rattlesnake's already had sewer installed. Currently, there's over 1,100 properties connected to the sanitary sewer in the Rattlesnake Valley. The project is proposed, will extend the sanitary sewer to 477 of the remaining 570 properties inside the city limits. So Peter's numbers were the valley as a total. This is both, these numbers are in the city limits, existing properties, 477 in this project. This is a variety of funding sources to do a project of this magnitude. The majority of the cost for the mains, 55% of the cost of the sewer mains being proposed to be installed in the Rattlesnake come through state, federal, and local subsidies. There's both city utility funds. There's Department of Natural Resources and Conservation monies. There's Environmental Protection Agency grants. And Treasure State Endowment make up 55% of the grants being proposed for this project. The remainder of the cost of the mains would be paid for through special improvement district assessments. So here's the sub-districts. There is three remaining sub-districts. The project originally started with four. Subdistrict 2, in the upper Rattlesnake area, was removed from the project through popular protest of that area. There is three remaining viable sub-districts. Subdistrict 1, in the Lincoln Wood area. Subdistrict 3, in the middle Rattlesnake or Lincoln School area. And Subdistrict 4 is the Duncan Drive or West Rattlesnake area. The costs, each one of these districts stands alone. The sub-districts are independently financed, and there's individual assessment rates for each sub-district. The SID includes, the numbers that we're talking about include both the cost of the main and the cost of a service stub from the main to the property line, to bring the sewer out of the street to the property line to make it available to each property for connection. The assessments for the SID are based on the size and value of each of the properties in the sub-district. Now, these median costs reflect all of the grants that have been applied to this project. And you can see that in the Lincoln Wood or upper Rattlesnake area, 118 properties, about $4,700 average SID costs. That's annualized over 20 years at 4.25% interest. That's $349 a year. Divide that by 12, that's $29 a month. And you can see the averages range from 46.37 to 49.62 in the Duncan Drive areas. We've heard loud and clear, "Cost is a concern." And we've made very serious efforts for cost containment on this project. A variety of people, especially the staff and Office of Planning and Grants, have been instrumental in bringing subsidies to this project. And I think it's very important to note that the concerns about costs are very serious, and we take them serious, and we've tried to reduce costs along the way through these grants and subsidies. One of the biggest issues is the infill development. Is this project for infill or is it for the existing developed properties? Clearly, 459 of the 477 properties in SID 528 are already developed, with homes discharging sewage to the aquifer. SID 528 primarily enables existing houses to connect to the public sewer system. 459 properties are up there discharging their sewage today. If you look at my sub-district in the Lincoln Wood area, there's 118 parcels. Two out of 118 parcels are undeveloped. Clearly, in the Lincoln Wood area, well in excess of 98% of the properties would be served. Again, this is to serve the existing homes in the Lincoln Wood neighborhood. Subdistrict 3, in the Lincoln School area, five undeveloped properties out of 101 parcels. 95% of the properties are developed in this sub-district. Subdistrict 4, 259 parcels, 12 are undeveloped. Again, 95% of the properties in the sub-district are developed and have existing discharges to our aquifer. That's the scope of our presentation. And we're going to be here for listening, for comments, and we'll be available to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Could I get a quick show of hands of those who wish to testify on this tonight? Okay. We'll begin by taking public comments. I'll ask you to try to limit your comments to three minutes. I know some of you will want to go longer than that, and that's fine. I'll remind you as time goes on, though, and at some point, I may ask you to stop, okay? So any public comment?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Terry McLaughlin, and I'm a resident of Missoula. I would like to make some brief remarks on behalf of the Tri-State Water Quality Council, a nonprofit collaborative group, of which I am a board member. These comments represent the views of the council. The Clark Fork-Ponderay River System is vital to the quality of life in a watershed that spans three states. Citizens, business, industry, government, and environmental groups are united in the Tri-State Water Quality Council to improve water quality in this watershed. We accomplish our mission through mutual respect, collaboration, science, and education. This is the mission statement of the Tri-State Water Quality Council. Those of us who have spent more than 10 years working with the council, and many others in western Montana, northern Idaho, and neighboring Washington, strongly believe in this mission. We are thankful that the city of Missoula and the Missoula City-County Health Department have been and continue to be active and supportive members of the council. Through the Tri-State Water Quality Council, the city of Missoula and Missoula County, in concert with other stakeholders in the Clark Fork watershed, developed a voluntary nutrient reduction program for the Clark Fork River, referred to by the acronym VNRP. The VNRP is an agreement to voluntarily reduce the nutrients nitrogen and phosphorus in the Clark Fork River. The VNRP was formally adopted in August 1998 and approved by both the Montana DEQ and the EPA as a functional equivalent of a TMDL. The current mayor, the current Chair of the City-County Health Department Board of Health, and the current Chair of the Missoula County Board of Commissioners, as well as representatives of Butte Silver Bow, Deer Lodge, Stone Container Corporation, the Clark Fork Coalition, and Montana Department of Environmental Quality all signed that agreement. Each signatory agreed to specific control measures to accomplish nutrient-related improvements in the river. The city of Missoula and Missoula County agreed, among other things, to connect 50% of the existing 6,780 septic systems in the Missoula urban area, resulting in an estimated reduction of 130 kilograms per day of nitrogen discharge to the Bitterroot and Clark Fork Rivers, and continue to connect existing septic systems in the Missoula area to a biological nutrient removal wastewater treatment system at a rate equivalent to the number of new septic system permits issued. To date, progress by all VNRP signatories has been dramatic. The city of Missoula and Missoula County are connecting hundreds of septic systems to the city sewer system in the West Reserve, East Missoula, and Mullen Road areas. These and other projects in the watershed are resulting in measurable reductions in nutrient loads in the river. But the task of preserving and safeguarding the groundwater and surface water in the Clark Fork watershed is not finished. The expansion of the sewer system into the Rattlesnake Valley is part of a much greater goal, the elimination of septic systems which leak nutrients and pathogens into the shallow groundwater of the greater Missoula Valley, and ultimately into the Clark Fork River. All septic systems, including those in the Rattlesnake Valley, work on the same hydraulic and microbiological principles. And all leak nutrients that ultimately wind up in the Missoula Valley aquifer. The question is not whether the Rattlesnake septic systems contribute to the problem, but rather, are they concentrated and close enough to existing sewer mains to be economical to connect? The city engineers have testified that this is a very economical group of septics to connect relative to other areas. And the nutrient- And the nutrient, nutrient removal facility has the capacity and technology to treat the wastewater to a very high degree of nutrient reduction. The connection of new areas to the city sewer can be controversial. Controversies will undoubtedly continue as sewer infrastructure expands to protect both underground drinking water and surface water in an urbanizing valley. The Tri-State Water Quality Council asks the city council to recognize the impacts from septic systems on our watershed, our community, our public health, and ecological health of the river, and make decisions, though sometimes politically difficult, that are in the best long-term interests of the people of Missoula and the Clark Fork watershed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bachman.
Hello, my name is Ken Crisp. I'm a water quality specialist certified by the EPA and Montana State DEQ. I'm a resident of the Rattlesnake, and I just have a couple of comments here about the whole sewage issue. Both Mr. Nielsen and the city engineer were real elegant in their presentation and presenting you facts and numbers, and, you know, we have to hook up, this is the law, this is what we all voted on, on doing with the people, with the EPA and the, and the people making decisions for the Clark Fork River. However, we have a district in the Rattlesnake that voted it out because of a seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent vote. So they don't have anything to do with this anymore. What about the other districts that voted, you know, up to seventy percent of the people? What if we did have seventy-five percent? What would have happened at that point? We wouldn't even be having these meetings. You, you wouldn't be able to sue a Rattlesnake. So is the question really water quality? Is the question really the water quality issue? And the, the sewage supposedly contaminating the groundwater and the river and the Rattlesnake? Because if we voted it out, then what would you do? So it, to me, it doesn't make sense that we should even have a vote. Because if it is a water quality issue, you people should just say, "Hey, it's a water quality issue. You guys can't have a vote, because this is what we have to do according to the law, according to EPA, according to the state." But that's not the way it is. So there's something confusing about that. Also, the city engineer said there's four hundred and seventy-seven units in the Rattlesnake that aren't sewered, or that, that, that are, yes, that aren't sewered, they're on, on septic systems or seepage pits. Well, four hundred and seventy-seven units, his figure was a hundred and nineteen thousand gallons of sewage getting into the aquifer every day. Well, if you do the math, the four hundred and seventy-seven units is exactly a hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty gallons of water a day that they are saying is contaminating, is contaminating and is sewage. It says four hundred and seventy-seven Rattlesnake units generating a hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty gallons a day of sewage. That all ends up in the aquifer, that all ends up in the Rattlesnake Creek, and all flows into Missoula Aquifer, and eventually enters the Clark Fork. Well, if you do the math, that's two hundred and fifty gallons a day per household. Two hundred and fifty gallons a day per household is the average water usage per household in Missoula, according to Mountain Water Company. My figures, according to the sixty-two public water supplies that I operate, is two hundred and six gallons a day. So let's just figure that's close, over two hundred gallons a day per household. Now, why isn't anyone calculating in? Why are they saying that two hundred gallons a day, or two hundred and fifty gallons a day that's coming into my house is leaving as sewage and contamination? What about the four percent water for drinking, seven percent water for, for cooking and other household, you know, watering your plants? If you calculate gray water into that figure, two hundred and fifty gallons a day isn't going out in raw sewage. That's not even close. If you do the calculations, which I don't need to go through right now, these figures of a hundred and nineteen thousand gallons a day of raw sewage is actually a hundred thousand four hundred and sixty-eight gallons over calculated. Now that's a lot of water that is non-sewage that people are trying to tell you that is sewage. What, don't we drink, don't we drink water? Don't we sprinkle? Don't we water our plants? That's not sewage. But they're saying it is. So that doesn't make sense to me. There's approximately one to two and a half percent of the water coming into a house that actually comes out as sewage with nitrogen and phosphorus and sulfates and sodium. Some of that does biologically get treated and denitrificate before it enters any area that could saturate into the groundwater or into the rivers and creeks. So we need to really, really think about, you know, some, some obvious facts that, you know, what, what is the, the real issue here? If it's water quality, hey, I run sixty-two public water supplies. I don't want contaminated water systems. I don't want nitrogen in my water supplies. I don't want bacteria in my water supplies. So I don't want to pollute. There's other ways to take care of the small amount of, of discharge that is actually containing some nutrients. There's other ways to treat that than having to hook up to a system, a sewage system that when it, when the city finishes its, its plant, its treatment plant, is going to put out over seven parts per million nitrogen into the river. And that's coming out of a pretty big pipe pouring into the river at seven parts per million. Well, seven parts per million, the Clark Fork Coalition says, is drinkable, it meets EPA standards of ten parts per million, which is EPA drinking water standard.
You're at about six minutes, Mr. Crisp.
Thank you. So if, if they're saying that thirty parts per billion can create algae and problems in the, in the rivers, why are they going to allow seven parts per million, which is a much greater amount of nitrogen, be poured directly into the, to the, to the river? And it's because of a dilution factor. They think that the solution to this pollution is dilution. And, you know, the solution to the pollution is not dilution. It's treating it properly, on-site, with a top-of-the-line Waterloo system, septic system that's been modified and approved, and, and treat it properly where it, where it belongs, so that the nutrients can go out into your grass and into your, your fields and fertilize the trees and, and, and make the grass green and not pollute the river in any way. And I know that's kind of hard to swallow, because this is a financial builder for, for the city, and there's a lot of money involved and a lot of money at stake, not just directly with the sewer hookups and for what we're going to have to pay for the sewer, but also for infrastructure, for contractors and builders to be able to build more and higher density in the Rattlesnake. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crisp. Okay, we're really trying to have a public hearing, and that means we're trying to listen to what people have to say. So I'd really request that you withhold the applause. Let us be the judge of what people have to say. That's the whole point of this exercise. Thank you. There's, you know, I suspect this is going to go on for quite a while, so when someone's winding up, go ahead and come on up and get ready to start being the next person to talk, instead of waiting for me to ask, "Is there any more public comment?" I know it's a nice waiting game, but I can guarantee you that the longer we go, the less we all are going to be able to hear what it is you have to say. So the sooner you talk, probably the better. Okay?
Thank you. My name's Dick Thompson. I live in the Rattlesnake, and I'd like to thank you all for listening to us and letting us talk about this. As with what Ken just said, I would reiterate some of the problems that I've seen with this project as it's been presented to the public. Here's an example for you. I'm going to use Mr. Carlson's number that he presented on the tape, the Rattlesnake Valley sanitary sewer project, tape number nine, that he presented last year at this time, of eighty-two pounds per day of nitrate originating from eight hundred and seventy-six septic units in the Rattlesnake Valley. And I'll take that as fact. He's our, he's the expert in the field. I'm going to take him as word there. Just a few days ago, February eighteenth, at the Public Works Committee, in testimony, Matt Clifford, Clark Fork Coalition, presented a number of eight to nine tons of nitrate per year going into the river. I'm going to take that as fact, too. I, I don't have those numbers. I like numbers. I'm not a water quality specialist, but I like numbers. Let's look at those two numbers. Both of those numbers were presented as being a very bad deal. The first number, eighty-two pounds per day times three hundred and sixty-five days per year yields me twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty pounds divided by two thousand pounds per ton. That, that gives me fifteen tons that originated in these septic systems, or in the houses with these septic systems. If only eight to nine tons makes it to the mouth area of the Rattlesnake, as per Clark Fork Coalition's estimates, that means that effectively, as a unit, we're doing forty percent nitrate mitigation. Forty percent. Sesspools, seepage pits, the whole thing together, forty percent. If you'd have hooked all those people up last year and sent it all to the sewer instead of eight to nine tons, or to the wastewater treatment plant at an estimated thirty percent, we'd have dumped ten and a half tons of nitrates directly into the Clark Fork River. Probably does mostly end up in the Clark Fork, but there is mitigation going on. There is nitrate that is being taken care of at a better rate than your current wastewater treatment plant. We hope, I'm, I'm very concerned about this issue. We looked at it very deeply. We hope that the new wastewater treatment plant does what it's advertised to do. This is a very, very serious issue. Let's see. That number also, the forty percent, if you come up with just a gross calculation, very gross calculation, also matches with what Tony Vanderpoel apparently presented to Public Works on February twenty-fourth. Part of what I'd like to say here tonight, in my second point, is those numbers were presented to you as egregious numbers. Eight to nine tons sounds like a bad number. But if I send that same sewage to your treatment plant right now, it's ten and a half tons. We need real numbers. We just need information. We need good, honest information. I felt that there was a piece of information given out tonight by one of the staff. Ninety-five percent of the parcels are developed. That was not ninety-five percent of the acreage. There was places there where I saw large parcels of land that would mean we would increase population density, and that is what we feel is the big concern here. Population density is going to change in the Rattlesnake, and with that, the nitrate problem is going to go up as well. That's misinformation. To me, that's misinformation. That's handling numbers in an inappropriate fashion. Give me acreages, tell me how many houses they're going to be there, not, there's only five percent of the parcels. When I've got five acre parcels, and you're allowing things like Apple Grove, where you're allowed more than two houses per acre, we're talking about a, a pretty good increase in population density. There were a couple of other facts that I saw that remained on some of the city slides that looked to me like misinformation. I don't know if it was presented, but it looked as though they still discussed the Mountain Water well closure at the Rattlesnake Middle School. That well is tested clean, I believe, after talking with Mountain Water. I believe it's about thirty months now. They're hoping to bring it back online. I think it should be removed. It doesn't look to be part of this problem. That was probably a specific incident. It's probably not a part of this problem. I think it should be removed. It looks like misinformation. I could, I could repeat other instances that look like misinformation, and I think that's inappropriate. Tell us the goods, and, and we can make good decisions. We're not bad people. Finally, I would say to you, I feel like, as council members, you're elected to represent us. When seventy percent of the people in the Rattlesnake said, "You haven't done a good enough job selling us this project," either by guaranteeing us that this is not a development, just a development free-for-all, and guaranteeing us that, that it is what it is to be, and that is a, a good thing for the water quality, if you can't convince us, you have no business voting for this tonight. You shouldn't pass this. If you have good information that you can pass to us and assure us that you're not going to change the nature of our neighborhoods just because you can, then I believe you, you could sell it to the people, and you wouldn't have the problem that you have right now with as many people against this project. I want to thank you for your time. I do appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
My name's Mike Bennett. I live at fifteen oh three St. Anne Drive, Missoula. I'll be brief. Seventy-one percent of property owners in the four districts originally proposed were unhappy enough with this proposal to sign formal written protests. That doesn't even cover the opposition. I, I heard directly from people who felt they could not sign protests simply because they did business with the city or could otherwise suffer repercussions if they did. In most cities, we wouldn't even be here tonight. With that kind of clear, public sentiment against this project, someone would have had the guts to stand up and say that the emperor has no clothes. This is something that has a problem. There's either the project itself, or the way it's been pursued, or both, is wrong and needs to be changed. But this being Missoula, even our own representatives seem unwilling to represent us. Last time we were here, Mr. Engen voted against us, under the rationale that we'd wise up and thank him later. Mrs. Kendall has been a fervent supporter of the sewer since before her election, and I'm fully expecting another steamroller here tonight. The council running roughshod over the neighborhood and most likely ending up back in court. So why not surprise all of us, including maybe yourselves? Why not represent your constituents, instead of the mayor, or the staff, or the employees, or the engineers? Why not pretend, just this once, that you work for us?
Good evening. My name's Shirley Zelstra, and I'm here representing the Missoula Water Quality Advisory Council, of which I'm currently a member and a former vice president. The Missoula Water Quality Advisory Council is submitting these comments in support of the proposed Rattlesnake Sewer Project. The Water Quality Advisory Council is a group of about twenty appointed volunteers with technical expertise in areas related to water quality, including hydrology, soil science, chemistry, toxicology, and natural resources engineering. Our charge is to provide consultation to the Missoula City-County Board of Health and the Water Quality District for the purpose of protecting, maintaining, and restoring the chemical, physical, and biological integrity of the waters of Missoula County. At our last meeting on February tenth, we invited Jim Carlson of the Water Quality District to present the district's findings on water quality issues in the Rattlesnake Valley and the rationale for the proposed sewer project. We have previously discussed Missoula's commitments under the voluntary nutrient reduction plan, VNRP, and progress on upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant, so the Rattlesnake presentation was discussed in the, in that context. In short, we found the evidence compelling in support of the sewer proposal. Following our points, we feel important when considering the merits of the proposed SID. A high proportion of septic systems in the, in these areas are old seepage pits, providing little to no treatment of nitrate. There is a significant proportion of septic system failure in this area. The density of septic systems in the SID area is high. Lots in some places are less than a quarter acre. Lots in some places are less than a quarter acre. This is higher density than is currently allowed under state law for septic systems. State law allows a minimum of half-acre lots if the lot is served by municipal water supply. Nitrate concentrations in groundwater in the Rattlesnake Valley are some of the highest in the Missoula area. Although they're below EPA drinking water standards, they are nonetheless significantly elevated above background concentrations measured in groundwater upstream of the developed areas. Nitrate increase is observable in Rattlesnake Creek. Based on density-
Ms. Zelstra, just a second. Where's this coming from? Okay, we have cell phones on. Let's turn them off, please.
Based on density-
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Based on density and water quality considerations, the Rattlesnake is a logical place for connecting septic systems to sewer to meet Missoula's obligations under the VNRP. There was also some discussion at this meeting concerning citizens' objections to sewer based on dislike of certain growth management policies in Missoula. As a technical committee, managing growth is not our ballerwick, but we are concerned if citizen backlash interferes with actions needed to protect water quality. We urge the city council to act to protect water quality and to find a way to address citizens' concerns about the growth implications of those actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zelstra.
I have a copy of the letter for all-
You just leave it with the clerk?
For the record, I'm Lauren Rogers. I live in the Rattlesnake area on Sycamore on the west side. Title of my essay here is "Catus's Trojan Horse." I read with interest a week ago, Sunday, the letter by Mayor Catus in the Missoulian as he so cleverly moved into the cost-fear zone of many of the residents of the Rattlesnake Sewer issue. A reported fifteen percent decrease in the cost of proposed sewer SID, pencils out to a whopping six dollars a month saving. What about the ten dollars and fifty cent user fee, which has increased thirty-two percent in the last two-year period to offset the Phase One of the water treatment plan? This thirteen-point-one-oh-eight million-dollar improvement is purported closer to nineteen million. This is only the start. Phase Two and Three are slated to cost twenty-three-point-seven-three-five million and twenty-two-seven-six-nine million. Respectfully, a real bill of goods, I'd say. You better grab your wallet, as this looks like a developer deal and not the gallant knight in shining armor that the mayor sees himself as. And just another couple comments, as I've testified before the Public Works Committee several times. This area in the Rattlesnake is not an open, unending area of developable space, and as Mr. King mentioned, all these areas have been developed almost, well, just like one of the previous testifiers, there is a major amount of acreage there that has not been developed. If you look at the map, it's a major area. And because we're sitting on a wilderness area border, I feel that the Rattlesnake should be maintained as a buffer area, protecting the aquifer as well as the Rattlesnake, the endangered species of the bull trout, the big game movement between east and west of the Rattlesnake, and opening this gate of development by instituting a sewer system extending to the border of this wilderness will certainly bring far more degradation to the environment than our meniscal amount of degradation to it via our septic systems. And I feel that because of the increased technology that's available for the septic systems nowadays, there is a much, much better way of treating this, and it will also ensure us the control of development in this beautiful, pristine valley. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Hollenbach needs a projector which we'd like to set up.
I don't know. A bunch of stuff.
Could you turn that screen down, Marty?
Okay. Mr. Mayor and council members, I am Chuck Hollenbach, and I have lived at four-four-one-four Timber Lane for thirty-two years. I have had extensive experience in working with environmental statements and EISs, and I made a presentation at the Public Works Committee on February twenty-fourth, two-oh-oh-four. I did an in-depth evaluation of the environmental assessment, the EA, for the Rattlesnake Valley Sewer Collection System. My analysis of the Rattlesnake Sewer EA shows that many of the statements in the EA were not based on fact. They are often misleading and untrue, if not illegal. I would like to take a moment to review the history of baubles and blunders. On June fourteenth, nineteen-ninety-nine, the city approved the adoption of the nineteen-ninety-nine Missoula Wastewater Facilities Plan that set in motion the sewer projects, including Orchard Homes, Target Range, Mullen Road, and Rattlesnake Valley. Can you give me the first slide, please?
I've got this one here.
The fir-, no, the first one. If ever a plan needed a detailed analysis and documentation of an environmental impact statement, that's an EIS, it was the facilities plan. Instead, the EA was written with a finding of no significant impact of Fonzie, and subsequent project plans that dovetail under this facilities plan, Fonze's were also written. Good God, in all the mulled-up million-dollar planning and project work, no physical, social, environmental, or economic impacts were identified. Significant impacts, such as air quality, traffic problems, impact on schools, neighborhoods, and elderly residents, as well as pass-through pollution from the treatment plant, were ignored. Sewer extensions have become the primary change agent for the entire Missoula Valley, and all we see is, in the facilities plan, is no significant impact. Take a ride down Mullen Road, and it doesn't take a rocket science to determine that there's some very significant impacts resulting from sewer. Let's take a look at the timeline for the wastewater facilities plan. The slide two, please. The city council approved the nineteen-ninety-nine facilities plan on June nineteen-ninety-nine, and the Fonzie was approved for publication on June nine-two-oh-two-thousand, a year later. There is documentary evidence that illegal changes were made after the fact, and if proven in subsequent legal action, heads will roll. I would like to elaborate on several points in my evaluation of the Rattlesnake EA. Reduced water quality in the Clark Fork River and Rattlesnake Creek and aquifer contamination allegedly caused by septic systems are non-issues and untrue as presented in the EA. Numerous hydrologists and water quality specialists provided data and analysis at public meetings that refuted the pollution claims by city officials. All their reports and findings were completely ignored by public officials. The sewer promotes development. It was reported that there were less than two dozen undeveloped lots in the project area. Boundaries were jury-rigged so that large undeveloped parcels, such as the open land east of Lincolnwood, are outside but adjacent to the project area. But the trunk lines run up against the boundaries, so development of those parcels get to tie into the sewer at little or no cost. If the area in question would be developed under high-density and bonus rules, it would greatly exaggerate already serious traffic, air quality, and school crowding problems in the Rattlesnake Valley. There are numerous undeveloped parcels in the valley that are waiting for high-density develop, contingent upon the completion of the sewer. With the sewer, the Rattlesnake Valley becomes a playground for developers, and we get stuck with the sewer bill. Seventy percent of the Rattlesnake Valley residents opposed the sewer project. Do we not have a say about our future, the future of our valley? A vote for the sewer SID project says, "You, Rattlesnake residents, have no rights to determine what should occur in your neighborhood." High-density developing, development is coming, and your cost is two-hundred, or two, sorry, two-thousand, twenty thousand dollars per household, like it or lump it." Slide one, or the last slide, please. In the planning process that I described in my analysis, the Rattlesnake Sewer EA, public participation is required in four of eight steps. In the Rattlesnake EA, there was none. In fact, the EA was written and approved eight months after the city council approved the Rattlesnake Sewer SID, thus negating all opportunity for public participation in that key process. This is illegal and opens a whole process to further legal challenges. Reject the Rattlesnake Valley Sewer Project and send it back for a complete revision. Thank you very much. I have a copy of my comments for each council member.
Thank you, Mr. Hollenbach. Can we get the lights back?
Excuse me.
Sorry.
My name's Katie Van Dorn, and I'm a Rattlesnake resident for the last about sixteen years, as well as a real estate agent with Lambros. And I also am here to state my opposition to the sewer. I feel like we've fought as citizens for, the whole reason why we live here in Missoula is because of the open space and the beautiful areas, and we've fought in past years for open space on Mount Jumbo and Mount Sentinel and up on the old Peace-Eyne Ridge. And I do believe it is a fact that if sewer is brought in, it will just multiply the houses up there, and it'll look more like Linda Vista than it does like the Rattlesnake. And to me, it's a question of quality versus quantity, and I think we really need to look at that big picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Dorn.
I have a couple. My name's Lorene Folsom. I want to talk tonight about a reason that I think you all should look, not only in the Rattlesnake, to using advanced onsite systems that produce little or no sewage sludge, but also in other areas of the city of Missoula. Because sewage sludge is a massive problem, and it's going to become a bigger problem. The United States produces about seven billion tons of sewage sludge each year. Since the U.S. Congressional ban of ocean dumping of sludge in nineteen-eighty-eight, sludge has been hauled to rural sites, dumped on farmland or in old mining sites, put in holding tanks, or sprayed or spread on the land as fertilizer. In Missoula's case, much, if not all wastewater treatment plant sludge collected from home and industrial sites goes to eco-compost to be eventually packaged and sold as lawn and garden fertilizer. City Public Works also has a future plan to spray some of this waste on the land and grow trees. Disposal of sewage sludge is a huge national dilemma, as more areas of the public sewer. Many of these sewer plants are going to tertiary treatment, as Missoula is doing. With tertiary treatment, the amount of suspended solid waste entering the rivers like the Clark Fork decreases somewhat, but there's consequently more sludge to dispose of in some way. There is no safe way to dispose of sewage sludge, which should, because of its content of metals and pathogens, be treated as hazardous waste. Montana has adopted the federal standards, or CFRs, for tolerated levels of metals and other contaminants in sewage sludge. These are the CFRs. Montana has adopted the CFRs. These are out of the federal register, and these are the concentrations allowed for bagged sewage sludge. There are a number of metals here. You can see, I've noted especially the top one. The amount of arsenic allowed as a ceiling concentration in bagged sewage sludge is seventy-five milligrams per kilogram, which translates to parts per million, and the drinking water standard for arsenic is ten parts per billion. So the amount of arsenic allowed in bagged sewage sludge is seventy-five-hundred times the drinking water standard. Now, we have to ask ourselves, what happens to the bagged sewage sludge? Well, it goes on the lawns. It goes on the gardens. It's washed into the land, off the land, taken into plants, and so this is a way for communities to dispose of toxic materials, toxic waste. Many of these metals come from industrial sites, and Missoula's wastewater treatment plant treats not only home sewage, but also industrial sewage. Cornell Waste Management Institute has tracked two-hundred-and-fifty sludge exposure complaints in at least twenty-five communities across the U.S. Tina Childers of Minifee, California, upon recommendation from the family doctor, moved her family from their home near farmland after their five-year-old daughter experienced chronic sinusitis and recurring bacterial infections. Her husband ended up in the hospital with a staph infection, and after she herself was treated for nose and throat infections. For months, they had been breathing air from farms near their home that used treated sewage sludge as fertilizer. Ms. Childers' comment was, "It smells like dead bodies." I have one more slide. I have one more slide. In Robesonia, Pennsylvania, Antonette and Russell Penrock's 17-year-old son, Daniel, who you see in the picture there, died of a sudden staph infection after walking on land thick with sewage sludge. The Pencks had thought that the farmer next to their home was simply spreading commoner on his field. A new study in a British journal ties sludge to a telltale pattern of illness in 48 people living near sewage sludge sites in the U.S. and Canada. The National Research Council's National Academy of Sciences stops short of calling sludge a health risk, but says there are serious concerns about the use of sludge as fertilizer. The 16-member National Academy of Sciences panel of experts and scientists say that the EPA hasn't studied the clusters of so-called sludge syndrome. Dave Lewis, an EPA scientist, received a job reassignment, I guess to an area where he couldn't cause any more trouble, after his study was published in the July 2002 British journal BMC Health, suggesting that people living near sludge sites run a 25% increased risk of getting infected with Staphylococcus aureus, the bug that killed this Danny Pinnock here. In his study, one in four people living near sludge sites who had symptoms from sludge exposure developed this Staphylococcus infection. In contrast, one of 100 hospital patients get this sometimes deadly staph, which is a leading cause of hospital-acquired infection. Two people in Dave Lewis's, this EPA scientist's, study died of the infection. After the 1988 congressional ban on ocean dumping of sludge, the Water Environment Federation, whose membership is made up of treatment plant managers and operators, state and federal employees, waste management corporations, engineering firms, construction companies, and equipment manufacturers and suppliers, received a $300,000 grant from EPA to, quote, "educate the public about the, quote, beneficial uses of sludge." EPA continued to pay half the salary of Dr. Alan Rubin, chief of EPA's Sludge Management Branch, as he became the nation's leading cheerleader for, quote, "biosolids," formerly known as sewage sludge. Industry-based WEF, that's the Water Environment Federation, hired Powell Tate, a powerful Washington-based public relations and lobbying firm, to draw up the plan to push public acceptance of, quote, "biosolids." Their document laid the groundwork for an all-out assault on those who would question the safety of using sludge as fertilizer. After the name change and marketing, the next step was regulatory revision. An example of pressure on the EPA was a letter from the New York Department of Environmental Protection to the head of the EPA, which stated, "The City of New York found that compliance with the pollution standards will be difficult, if not impossible, to achieve for 80% of the city's sludge." In 1993, the EPA rewrote its sludge rules and set limits on how much arsenic, mercury, cadmium, and six other inorganic chemicals could be spread on farmland. The EPA knew sludge contained other pollutants and bacterial pathogens, such as salmonella, E. coli, endotoxins found in certain disease-producing bacteria, asbestos and viruses that cause polio, hepatitis A, and meningitis, but decided to rely on sludge treatment and its exposure to air, heat, and sunlight to minimize their harm. The EPA's Office of Research and Development refused to sign off on the proposed sludge rules in the absence of scientific documents to support the proposed rule and the numbers in it. One objection was that EPA did not assess the risk of runoff from lands into the very water it claims to be protecting. Robert Swank Jr., a former EPA research director, in a September 6, 2000 deposition, said, "I can tell you there was very little work actually done that looked at either threats to groundwater or threats to surface water from either toxins, pathogens, or metals that I could call credible." The sludge rule revisions included, and this is the revisions in 1993, included increased acceptable cumulative load limits for every heavy metal regulated by the CFRs. Lead from 100 to 265 pounds per acre. Zinc from 150 to 2,469 pounds per acre. Arsenic raised threefold, and chromium ballooned from 467 to 2,645 pounds per acre. A recent publication from Cornell University's Extension Service recommends that farmers limit the total cumulative load of metals in soil to no more than 1/10 the cumulative load limits set under federal requirements. Why? Because some heavy metals in excesses of others ingested by aquatic organisms, wildlife, and humans can cause physiological mayhem. Troubles like kidney disease, hypertension, liver damage, neural damage, structural changes in tissues, and reproductive problems. On average, the regulations for cumulative loading of heavy metals are eight times higher than those set in Denmark, Canada, the European Economic Community, France, and the Netherlands.
You have about 10 minutes, Ms. Folsom.
Okay. The composition of sludge changes as often as materials are flushed into the system. According to Cornell University and the American Society of Civil Engineers, on any given day, sludge may contain PCBs, chlorinated pesticides, such as DDT, Aldrin, Endrin, Chlordeine, 24D, heavy metals from wood preservatives, pesticides, metal plating in batteries, bacteria, viruses, fungi, chlorinated compounds, flame retardants, and asbestos, petroleum products, industrial solvents, nitrogen, phosphorus, potassium, and dioxin. The EPA has no restrictions on the type or amount of synthetic chemicals that may be present in sewage sludge. A 1992 Farm Journal article called sludge a potential land bomb. If a farmer wants to test sludge before it is spread, he can pay a lot of money to test that sludge, and after it's spread, all of his liability is transferred to him. Hugh Kaufman, for 32 years an engineer with the U.S. EPA in its Office of Solid Waste and Emergency Response, and a federal whistleblower for Love Canal, who has helped citizens combat the land application of toxic sludge, claimed that land application of sewage sludge in rural west Texas was a threat to public health and the environment. He was subsequently sued by several New York companies. The Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals threw out the lawsuit and ruled that there is no scientific consensus that land application of sewage sludge is safe. Mr. Kaufman's prediction is that the growing awareness of mainstream Americans, coupled with the government and industry recalcitrants, will ultimately lead to a national ban on land application of sewage sludge, as was done to ocean dumping a dozen years ago. The City Council and Public Works Committee has heard considerable information during this series of Rattlesnake SID meetings about advanced onsite wastewater treatment systems. In the matter of sewage sludge, the biofilter system produces virtually no sludge, and the aerobajet, a septic system add-on, which can be installed for about $1,000, can be used to clean up sludge as it reduces BOD, TSS, and nitrogen. Finally, I want to say that I've heard no discussion in these proceedings about the Rattlesnake Coalition's 60-day notice of intent to sue the city of Missoula under the Clean Water Act, and how that may factor into your decision with regard to SID 528. I'd like to hear some council response to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Folsom. Ms. Folsom, could you turn off your overhead? Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Gabay, and I'm a new resident in Rattlesnake. We just moved here, my husband and I, and my child. And we finally have achieved our dream of owning our first home. And we live on Woodland Avenue. And to be honest, I don't have any numbers. Don't have anything with me. But I just, actually, I'm afraid of what is happening right now. And I'm afraid that we're going to lose our neighborhood if this sewage issue, if it passes. And I would urge you to please consider the neighborhood that we live in, in our open space. I came from an area where people are closed in. You have walls. They're looking right down on you. You hear all of your neighbors' noise. And that increases so much stress in your life and all the safety issues that go along with it. It's tremendous. And I just have this fear that if we pass this and we pay a ton of money to put this sewer in for the developers to come in and build up a huge number of homes right behind me. So that's my fear. And I would hope that you consider what all the people have talked about before and to base your decisions on some very sound science and to consider what Missoula's, our neighborhoods, and to keep our neighborhoods the way they are right now in the Rattlesnake. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Gabay.
I'm Will Snodgrass again. Could someone run those lights again, please? And thank you. I want to begin tonight by exposing yet another piece of misinformation that was given tonight, or was given at the Public Works Committee meeting February 12, 2003, and which continues this evening through the presentations by Mr. Bender, Mr. Nielsen, and Mr. Carlson. At the February 12 meeting, Mr. Carlson informed the members of the Public Works Committee that you'd have to dig up the nitric acid drain field every 20 years to replace it. And I knew that to be untrue. So when Mr. Carlson came on the radio and said essentially the same thing on KGO, I took the liberty of writing to Lombardi Associates, the dealers for the nitric acid system. And I talked at length with Mr. Lombardo, who calls me Snodgrass, so it's Dear Snodgrass there. If you read, "I hereby confirm that the nitric nitrogen removal treatment system does not require regularly digging up the drain field to replace the sawdust." There is no sawdust used in the drain field associated with a nitric system, so no digging would be required. The effluent from the nitric system would meet the nitrate design objectives. And he did say some people in Montana had fooled around with putting sawdust under the drain fields, but they don't do it because it causes more problems than it's worth, and the systems work fine without it. I'd also like to address the misinformation that Mr. Nielsen should have known better than to have tried to present and foist on you tonight about alternative systems. I think most of you recall hearing Mr. Nielsen say tonight that these systems are experimental and that you need 20,000 square feet or something like that. Mr. Nielsen knows full and well that the Waterloo Biofilter, the Waterloo Nitrox R, the Biopure, and the Aerobajet, if he's done his research on that one, are all permitted in all kinds of places in the United States, and they perform very, very well. It is the Biopure system that consumes, the Aerobajet that consumes sludge. It's used to clean up industrial sludge and livestock sludge. And the Biopure system that's installed in marinas and golf courses and homes and apartments and the Xinjiang Hotel in China produces virtually no sludge. Again, the water coming out of it is cleaner than the drinking water going into that hotel. Next slide, please. This was taken today up in the Rattlesnake, just opposite the dam where the Mountain Water Company has its waterworks up there. This is a farming operation, and you'll see the cow manure piled up here. This is all down gradient to the Rattlesnake Creek. Next, please. This is the manure that is about 20 yards from the irrigation ditch there. And again, it is dolled down, gradient downhill from there. You see the cow up in the background up there. Next. This is some of the runoff from the area right inside the fence. You can see the contamination here. This is running downhill. This is laden with manure that you see here. Next, please. This is the downhill run heading in the direction of the creek. Next. This is looking directly across from the piles of manure at the waterworks. And you can see the distance is not very great at all. Next, please. This is the Rattlesnake Creek, adjacent to the ranching operation, and there are a number of them up there. And I did not burden you with the many photos I took of dog waste all along the trail, which, of course, could have been the source of contamination for the single well that the health department trots out again and again. This is a cumulative impact that should have been considered in your environmental impact statement, the EIS that does not exist. Your EA fell short. The man from the, someone up here tonight, I don't quite recall who, said that the VNRP, Voluntary Nutrient Reduction Program, was signed by Max Dodson of the EPA. Well, somebody from the EPA signed the Mullen Road EA, the Rattlesnake EA, the Failed Wastewater Facilities Plan EA. And we need not be reminded a great deal that the EPA has been taken to court and had its clock cleaned by numerous environmental groups because some fool in an upper echelon office didn't do his job and signed off on something he shouldn't have signed off on. Most of the signing off here in these projects is being done in Helena with a CC to a gentleman by the name of Mohammed Razazian. I talked with Mr. Razazian last week to ask him about his knowledge of the National Environmental Policy Act. He didn't know what he's talking about. Then he said he had to go to a meeting. The Tri-State Water Quality Council got up here and talked about the VNRP. There is no enforcement. They have failed to meet the standards for the river. The VNRP is probably illegal. And I would ask the Tri-State Water Quality Council and the representatives of the Clark Fork Coalition, how about obeying federal and state law, for starters, in these projects? As Mr. Hollenbach told you, NEPA and NEPA require proper scoping and consideration of alternatives. This was not done. The law does not say that gravity main systems must be chosen, nor does it say that the engineers can simply discard viable alternatives that, again, do not produce sludge. Mr. Thompson's estimates, that he did not share in full with you tonight, along with Mr. Barron's, clearly demonstrate that with the development that's going to go in, including the 16 townhouses slated or talked about that we found in the records at Public Works near Creek Crossing, that these developments will cause an overall increase of nitrates into the river. Mr. Reedy, I did talk with the property owners downstream regarding the contamination on the river there. They're not interested in talking to anyone from the city. They're afraid. I verified that their land could not be sold because of the liability issue. I verified that there is a brown slime. They said it smells like human waste. It is human waste. And the people from the government, and I think he's talking about the USGS service, came out there and tested it, and they said that they would recommend against eating the fish there and against going into the water. There are some very serious problems with this plan from the top down, the overarching umbrella, the wastewater facilities plan. These involve violations of federal law. The penalties for these violations run into the thousands of dollars per day, and they involve prison terms. As Ms. Folsom told you, the Rattlesnake Coalition filed a 60-day notice of intent to bring suit against the city of Missoula under the citizen enforcement provisions of the Clean Water Act. And the letter also informed you that there are other causes of action that do not require a 60-day notice. You need to begin obeying the law on this. You need to send this back to committee. And Ms. Rye, if I hear you say again, as you did over here in the corner after last week's meeting, that you want to curtail public discussion by council members of certain features of this problem that we're dealing with, then I would imagine that your actions would only serve to bring this city back into Fourth District Court. The Constitution is very clear. The codes are clear. You will not have ex parte communications. You will involve the public. You will allow them to participate. And you will obey the law. If you are not able to do that, then again, I would say that you should resign. You do not belong in public office. Thank you.
Are there any additional public comments?